All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, November 7th, 6:00 PM. I'll call this meeting on the North Brookfield Board of Selectment to order. If you'll all rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have no minutes to approve tonight.
Selective call, three questions, one.
That's one in every crowd. So before we get started, this coming Saturday is Veterans Day, so I'd like to let everybody know that, remind everybody that it's Veterans Day and that, you know, we take that opportunity to honor our veterans and I'd like to have a moment of silence for those that have fallen. Thank you. All right, so we have the approval of the warrants. We have payroll warrant, I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 10 for $347,559.79. School warrant number 1033 for $122,785.53. General sewer, 1034, for $808,775. The general, 1035, for $110,702.70. Wastewater treatment plant upgrade, 1036, for $316,427.37. And the community development block grants for NB-21, 1037, for $14,327.77.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Financial items, the first thing is a request for hold-in funds from the police department. Brooke, do you want to read that?
Sure. So this is from Chief Smith. It says, Chairman Petritas, I'm requesting the amount of $2,600 to be reserved for the North Brookfield Police Department for the purchase of new replacement batteries needed for our portable two-way radios. We currently have no replacement batteries and several of the batteries are failing, obviously causing the potential officer safety issue of not having reliable communications with dispatch and other officers. I would also request that the amount of $3,840 be reserved for North Brookfield Police Department for the purchase of new replacement batteries needed for our department's drone. We were fortunate enough to receive funding from an earmark that our state representative, Donnie Bertham, applied for. The batteries are no longer holding their maximum charge and it's been four-plus years since they've been replaced. The shorter battery life will lead to shorter flight times and this could be detrimental in a time of need such as a search and rescue of a missing person or any other type of public safety emergency. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Respectfully submitted, Chief Smith.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for hold-in funds.
Sold.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Nope.
All right.
Oh, I guess the only question is, do we know what the hold-in?
The balance is $10,751.05.
Okay.
So there's enough in there.
Okay.
Chief, can you remark on instances where you've used the drone? Without any names?
Well, the search and rescue missions, we've used them also, different fire departments, private sevastis and fire scenes, area of use and stuff, but we've had runaways. We've had, I think, when we first had it, we had a runaway. And it was at night, behind the school, it was up in the grassy area, high grass, and I think this was one of the best parts because the officer that was watching out in the woods couldn't see the person, but the drone could. And literally, our officer was standing right in front of the person that he couldn't see with the drone, because it has the infrared to find that person. That was a 13-year-old girl that ran away. But it's used for, it's been used in the worst times for trace and access scenes, chase and pursuits that happen in different towns, missing people. It goes on and on. It gets used quite a bit.
Fantastic.
How many pilots do we have?
Excuse me, we have two that are in charge right now. Lieutenant Davis is in charge of it and Jeff Martin is also the other, both been certified for the use of it.
So there's always somebody available.
You know, that's fine, fantastic. That's, you know, that's just to show how your tax dollars are being used. All in favor?
Aye.
So these requests for the...
For the highway, there's one that doesn't have any backup paperwork. It's just on there as the main hydraulic pump.
All right, does it need to be tonight?
I think so.
All right, so we've got main hydraulic pump for the 1995 John Deere loader, $3,000 to $4,000. That's obviously important for salt and gravel and all that stuff, so, snow coming. I'm taking a motion to approve that expenditure for the new main hydraulic pump for the John Deere loader.
Sold. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. McNeely Tree Service, $1,400. Tree Services rendered weekend in 10:20. I'm taking a motion to pay $1,400 to McNeely Tree Services.
Sold. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody know what fluid film is?
It's the undercoating that they use on the trucks.
Okay. All right, so looking for $300 for a fluid film, I'm taking a motion to approve that.
Sold. Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Tara said you had a request for Parks and Rec.
Yes, it's a funding request, though.
Oh, that you said to put on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have something?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, requesting permission to put up no parking signs in two separate areas. The first area would be down at the town forest park, on that triangle area, for the no parking on grass. We've had trucks parking on there, they're tearing up the grass, they're grating rods, causing a problem when we're cutting the grass. So we'd like to put up a no parking on grass sign there. And the second place we'd like to put a no parking sign is at the common before, on the utility pole before the main entrance to the common, the crosswalk, before that center crosswalk where the fountain is.
Okay.
To allow space between, you know, so no parking on that, so you have a clear line of sight at that crosswalk, especially when we've been having events, people are parking there, you have kids, young people trying to cross the street, and it's really creating a dangerous situation. We kind of put that on the item before with the Safety Committee.
Did the Safety Committee talk about it?
They have recommended in the past to...
In that spot?
In that spot, right before and right after the crosswalk to create a no parking zone. So it's a car length on each side.
Yes, we'll take any cost of signs out of our budget, which apparently isn't really that much, it'll be less than $100 for every places.
I think we have access to a sign maker. Talk to Jason, he might be able to have it done.
Yeah, Tara does too, and it did seem pretty reasonable, so.
I'll entertain a motion to approve of those no parking signs that are requested by the Parks and Rec Committee.
Sold. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
How many spots are you taking between both poles or?
No, just the one utility pole before the crosswalk, we'd like to put one there. That's about a...
Near the shed, the pole near the shed?
Yeah.
So after the crosswalk on north, it's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, then maybe we can have highway painted pavement also.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Springtime, whenever they do their painting. That would help too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. All in favor?
Yep.
All right.
Did you have any discussion?
No.
You're awesome, okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Business review bid for tree work. I think we need a list of trees or we need them all marked out before we can put it out to bid, right? Because you have to bid by the job.
Well, he's looking for an hourly rate or a daily rate, I think, because it's hard
to go around and mark the trees because that would change all the time.
Yeah. All right, let's talk about this next Tuesday then.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Last time we spoke about it, we spoke about it at the meeting, and literally, two days later, I got a letter in the mail from Louis saying you were being contracted by National Grid.
Yes. National Grid does their own thing.
Okay, are we, is everybody kind of talking?
That's the question for the tree ward.
Okay.
Yes, National Grid sent me a list of the trees. They're all marked. I forwarded that to Highway Department.
Perfect.
Yes.
They mark them, if you see blue, there's a few of them around that have a blue spray paint on them, so those are the ones, I think, that they're taking down.
Is that on the road, in front of your house, on the street?
Yes, sir.
So they may not take the whole tree down, they may trim it, or do you know?
No, typically, they just come and trim them, trim them off.
They would just let you know?
Right.
The work order said trimmed and removed, so like, it sounded like some would be removed and some would just be trimmed, but depending on the need.
If they're marked, they're for removal, otherwise they just trim them.
So we'll talk about that more next week. So review the Public Record Access Guidelines. I'd like to look at that again at our next televised meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing. There's a lot there, so. Library HVAC repairs discussion.
That would be...
And you're up.
So I'm top scorer and I'm board trustee and also on the maintenance committee for the library. So, yeah, we probably already were informed by Amy that we lost one of our elite pumps for the HVAC system. That's a circularity pump that provides the, obviously, heating water. It actually is a dual temperature pump, it works round the clock, 24/7, 365. It also manages the chill water too, so it's an important pump. It's 16 years old and it failed, and luckily, we had a backup that was also 16 years old, and that's right in place now, keeping it operating. But we got a proposal from a non-HAC to replace the lead pump, and that's $9,700. And, you know, we looked at our budget, we have, carry money every year for PM type maintenance, but not something great to fix it, so.
And how much?
$9,700. So, you know, the question is, are there any ARPA funds that could be applied to this? I mean, is there ARPA money that would be available for when something breaks like this?
I do think there is ARPA money available. I think that, have you been to the ARPA committee?
No.
We had initial conversations about that. We haven't been, for this item, no.
We'll put in a formal request.
Okay.
And I'm sure they'll look at it at their next meeting. And then if, you know, they pass it on to us, great. If they don't, just come see us again and we'll talk.
So, you have the contact info for that?
What's that?
I can find it. I know where Ashley lives. I just wanted to add a couple of things. We know the town budget is stretched.
That's an understatement.
And this is true for the library as well. We receive less than 1% of the town's operating budget, and that's to run a 13,000-square-foot library with all the programs involved. This did pop up, it was unanticipated. This company's done a very good job of switching back and forth and keeping us on an even My concern is that if the ARPA request falls through, I know there's a town meeting in December, I know, this is beyond our budget. We don't have any money for that, and I know warrants have to be in by Thursday. So is that something that we should pursue at the same time we pursue ARPA funds?
Well, you could. You don't, we don't have to move on the thing at the town meeting. You can have an article on there, and then if ARPA has the money to pay for it, or something else comes up to pay for it, we can just pass over that article.
But we should put something in place?
I would recommend that, yeah.
That's my, that's my foot in the door question. Now, I was asking Mr. Google about how to write warrants and so forth, and of course, you have to stay in money, but you also have to stay where it's coming from in order to be transferred.
For the motion, you do need where it's coming from, but for the article itself, you can just say to transfer from available funds, if we don't know where it's coming from yet.
Oh.
And then the motion identifies the amount and the...
And the purpose.
And the purpose and where it's coming from. I'm assuming the ARPA's going to approve it, because there's really nowhere to pull that one from, but if you get an article on there, at least it's on there.
We knew that, but, I mean, actually, truthfully, the parts have already been ordered, and there's an eight-to-10-week lead time. What we're concerned about is if we get into cold temperatures and that backup pump fails, it could be a disaster, it could have frozen pipes, looking at the winter. The repair has to be made, it's just a case of trying to pull from some kind of one.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Are we replacing one pump that's dead, or are we replacing the dead pump and the 16-year-old backup pump?
No, what we're replacing is the dead pump.
The dead pump.
And then we're going to see if we can rebuild the dead pump as a backup.
I'm just asking, because if you have one sitting there for 16 years, using it intermittently, it's going to be ready to fail also, so I didn't know if you should be looking at it.
No, they're going to see if it can be refurbished, if it can't, well, then we're against another purchase.
Well, then you've got to go up again. I don't know if it would be wise to ask for both of them so you have a working system again, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, we'll take your advice on that.
Well, I've been in the contract business for years, replacing motors and pumps and stuff and...
And like I said, this pump runs all year long because it's a one-pipe, just turn it over, you know, fall and spring, so.
Do they alternate, or you're just using the second one now?
Like the lead-lag type situation.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so the second one is not in great shape.
To me, it would make sense to go for the two, just my opinion.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the event.
You're welcome.
If this kind of thing weighs you down, because you know you want to put your best foot forward, and we're trying our best to stay within our means, and this was a good question for us.
All right, wonderful. Well, I'm sure we'll make it work somehow.
Okay.
You're welcome. Anne, you're up.
Hi, Anne Adams, I'm the Emergency Management Director of the town. When I first took over as the EMD, I was made aware of the EMTG grant funds, which come out every year. Our town is entitled to $2,700 worth of grant money. We were initially going to pursue getting radios for the department, but that proved to be not an effective use of the funding. So we decided we were going to spread the wealth a little bit, and we got some things from the police department, and we also got a couple of things from the fire department. One of the trainings that we attended was the ASHER training, which is the new national protocol for active shooter scenarios. That kind of struck a chord with me because in my other job, I am a school teacher, so it came to my, it kind of started brewing in my brain that there was something we could do to help the fire department respond to those scenarios, and so what we came up with was buying two trauma bags that they can bring into active situations. I'm not the medical one, so I'm not up on all the things that they need, but there's tourniquets, there's chest seals, gauze, these kits are pretty comprehensive, but the bags are big enough that you guys can add and subtract whatever you might need, so.
Did Sean speak for that, or?
Yeah, he could. He's a little guy.
Yeah, watch out.
The biggest thing is...
Tell us what we're getting.
Well, it started off with, again, with a grant money, which tourniquet's the most bang for a buck. We've got the two bags, we've got 10 cat tourniquets, one cat tourniquet is about $27 a piece right now. We have a quick clot, which any sort of trauma situation, the fact you get that blood to actually clot up, you're saving lives, but it's very bumpy. So we're able to get like eight or 10 of those. We've got some heavy trauma bandaging in there, we've got some volatile splints in there as well, too. Basically, these are like the, holy heck, everything's going to bad stuff day. Hopefully, they'll never get used, or at least now, you know, they'd already started making real strong efforts to do that on their own, we're just trying to help some of them, but they've already started. That's all.
All right, is there a shelf life to that bag and what's in it?
The only thing that's really dated are your quick clots.
Okay.
But usually, every, most healthcare zone is two years, and that's just because of FDA stuff. It really doesn't.
The bags are pretty heavy-duty, so those will...
Well, I'm more concerned...
The stuff inside, it's gauze and...
Yeah, it's a quick clot that's going to be the experiment, everything else just straight managing.
Okay.
That'll go into our full inventory for checks anyway, just like we do with stuff in the truck. I'm here representing the squad through the chairman of the board. Pat and the guys are out again today, they've been out eight times since 8:00 this morning. So they're out again now, it's been one of those days, but we want to say thank you for the, because we have a whole area now dedicated towards something tragic like that, even with the vests that we get through donations. We've got four vests now for the guys to respond with, we're going to set up some training here with Ryan and the chief on that. So this will complement the area that we're setting up for, God forbid, a real tragedy. So thank you on behalf of the squad and fire, we appreciate it very, very much, that's all.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept the resources obtained from that grant that emergency management applied for.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good work. All right. So we have a complete streets grant contract amendment. We, I believe we voted on this before, and we need to extend the grant because it was taking a long time to get all the engineering done for that. So I'll entertain a motion to sign that amendment contract extension.
Sold. Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Let's get it going.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the shared streets grant contract is, in addition to that, it's also going to go for the downtown development with the sidewalks and all that stuff, and that's the same thing, we need to vote on an extension for that, so I'll entertain a motion to sign the amended extension for the shared streets grant.
Sold. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, now we have a...
Okay.
What's that?
Oh, just have you sign it after.
Okay. Request for resources, Rural Justice Network, initial approval. Someone hear from the, all right.
He's still making noise.
So you have everything listed on here?
Yep. Yep.
And your plan is to have the drag performers again?
Yep.
You plan on having any kind of tent for them to perform in?
Um, we might have one set up.
Or are you still going to be out in the open again, like last time?
We might have a tent for, if it rains, to try and be a little bit more weather prepared for that, but I'm planning to have, if we do have a...
Well, you can, you can get the approvals from the other people, but the same thing's going to happen this year that happened last year, I'm not voting for it. Okay, I'm just not. If you're not going to have that stuff hidden from kids, I'm not voting.
It's not part of the Parks and Rec policy, though, so...
I really couldn't care less.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the request for resources for the Rural Justice Network event.
What date?
June 29th, 2024.
Could I say something?
Hold on.
Somebody needs to say something.
June 29th is from the 4th of July.
Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, one second. All right. Public comment period. Julian.
I'm not sure what just happened. Did you vote against it?
We didn't vote for it, there was no, there was only one motion. It was not seconded.
Whatever that means.
It means, it means nothing happens. It doesn't go forward.
Oh, okay, so that I don't have to tell you about the Connecticut, John Brown's Connecticut Gun Club.
No, you do not.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Tanya?
Since John mentioned that the 4th of July celebration is usually that weekend, how do we go from here?
Well, we're going to have to look at that and see, because I know the 4th of July is on Thursday, so that's the other end of the week. So we haven't really thought about it because it's still a little early. So now that it's been brought up, we're going to have to think about which weekend it's going to be. But since it is closer to that other Saturday, it might end up being pushed to that, and we'll see. Remains for discussion. Yes?
So I'm wondering, we've heard that it's not part of a Parks and Rec policy or rules or anything to require screening or a tent for privacy or whatever, but is that something that your board has the ability to insert as a condition of any future approval?
I don't know.
I doubt it. I mean, based on the way last year went and based on the legal feedback that we received, I don't think that that's something that we can, that we can do.
Like require?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So once again, the ACLU will probably come into play on that, what it did last year.
Anybody else? Public comment? Yeah.
Now, last year, we originally asked for the Saturday after the 4th of July, one of you guys were doing your 4th of July there, so we moved it to the Saturday before.
Well, you asked for it in June originally, and that was the Saturday before. Well, you asked for it in June originally, and that was the Saturday before.
We originally asked for July 1st.
Yes.
And then they moved it back to June 24th.
So we're willing to move the date as we did again this year.
Okay. Well, I'd like you to consider what we talked about. All right, anybody else? All right, this is a special town meeting on Friday, December 8, 7:00 PM. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.